Hello, everybody.
Wait just a moment.
Hi, Robin.
Well, you look like you're doing your connections. Okay, Doug?
Yes. Yeah, no, I got kicked out. My Wi-Fi kicked me out. I had to come back and rejoin.
Okay, wait, did we start?
It's just loading the YouTube now, and you're all set.
We're gonna stay on right until 7:30.
7:30. So let me announce that there has been some confusion to the public. This is the zoning board of appeals meeting of December 3rd. There was some confusion. Some notices said that the meeting began at 7 o'clock. Some notices said the meeting tonight was beginning at 7:30, and therefore, to ensure that everyone who was interested in this meeting has the opportunity to be in attendance, we will virtually reconvene in whatever it is, 12 minutes at 7:30. So everyone who's there, please return in at 7:30. Thank you, and I'll see you then.
Michael, you're gonna stick on Frank. You staying on?
Yeah, I'm staying on.
Yeah, I'm staying on.
Amber, you staying on?
You should stop the recording, please.
Yeah, I heard my man is gonna get hit with a snowstorm this weekend.
Did you? I didn't see that.
I heard.
So for the first time since I have been on the board, which has been several years, there are no new applications. So, and in fact, no public hearings to be had tonight. So let us start with closed applications. So the first item to discuss is going, we're going to take it a little bit out of order because Abby needs to leave quickly. He can only stay on for a short while. So we're going to do out of order case number 58202600 Lorraine Street. The application for several variances. Now, there are, there was a draft resolution circulated, so let's work from that. So my first comment about it is we need to have, as you, as you've seen now, other, you know, as we've seen from agendas where, not agendas, resolutions that were adopted for meetings and for prior variances, and we're looking to see why they were done. This says nothing. We need to put substance in this draft resolution. It isn't enough to say whereas it meets the findings. We need to say why it meets the findings. Now, we can say one reason that it meets the findings for with discussion at the beginning that will cover all of them, or we can put it individually, but we gotta have some rationale for this. It is not enough to say this is it.
Wow.
Robin, Robin, also, just, just as an overview before we get into that, I agree. Um, I thought that we had determined that they didn't need a variance for the combined side yards. Is that in here? It says that still in the beginning. Is that because that was printed on the notice of violation? So we still need to address it?
We do need to address it because that's what they said, but if, if, I don't, I know we determined they didn't need one of the yard side, the yard variances.
We can't, I think actually, they, yeah, so a couple things, just explain. First, I was wondering, since they are moving where their, the start of their building is in the back to reduce the FAR, I would think that then they don't need the, the, the variance for being 5.8 rather than 6 because, because they brought it back. I would think that that, it was such a de minimis change. I would think that perhaps they don't need that variance. They don't need the two side yard, you know, the combined side yard variance. And I also thought that we had determined that they had been grandfathered in for the parking spaces.
We did. We did determine they've been grandfathered.
Yeah, so I totally get it that we have to put in the preamble whereas because we are repeating what the violation stated. But somehow, I think when we get to the findings, we have to say although the violation said this, we found this.
It's not when we get to the findings. I think it needs to say that at the very beginning. So the resolution said, the draft resolution says whereas appealed to this, whereas the applicant has applied for five area variances, whereas and we had this, we had, we had a public hearing. Then we need a new paragraph that says something to the effect of whereas in reviewing the application, the board determined that the that the board determined that there was no that the parking spaces were a pre-existing non-conforming condition, and therefore, no variance was needed as there was no expansion of the number of dwelling units in this property, and whereas the side yard, it was determined that there was no side yard, no side yard variance was needed. And so we should just say that right up there and then remove them from the area variances that we are approving.
So I think that just leaves us with the FAR and the extension.
Wait, I thought there was one side yard, but I don't remember. I thought we got rid of one and there was one left. I gotta go look.
Well, I, I know we thought that you didn't need the combined side yards, but I'm raising the point. They were, they are not going extending all the way back over the initial, the footprint right now that goes to the 5.8 within the one yard. I thought that that's the, where they're, they're, they reduced how far they're going out with that building structure. And I'm thinking 5.8 is pretty small. I wonder if they even need a variance if they're not going to the full out for that, that.
Yes. If they're 5.8 and the requirement is 6, and they're still 5.8, they do need a variance even if it's 0.2 feet.
No, but you understand that the footprint is 6, but that's pre-existing. So this was, they were asking for it because they were increasing that non-conformity because they were building the second floor over it. But I'm saying now they're not going as far with the second floor. Are they, they're not going to the edge of the footprint. So they may not be extending that non-conformity.
Oh, I see what you're saying. On the second floor, they may not be. Let's go see. This is the revised version. Sorry, I'm gonna try and double check. But yes, if the, the top floor is no longer going, I thought it was going the same depth. It's just not going the same. Yes, it's the same 5.8 feet on the, it's 6 feet is required. They have 5.8 feet, and I'm looking at the revised plans. Oh, wait, that's the second. I don't, let me go look at the, oh, I see. That's the first story that they're not changing. Right, sorry. If anyone else wants to can look. That's the first floor. Let's go to the second floor. The second floor plans. Now I've got the third floor plans. I can't find a second. Okay, this is the, let me reduce, sorry. This is the first floor plan. Let me scroll down. First floor. Second floor. Okay, now we got the second floor.
So this would be the revised plan when they came back.
I'm looking at the revised plan. No, the, the side that they're taking less dimension of looks to be the, not the side where the, the minimum, where the side yard is.
Are you certain? I know it's the backyard, but they have two side yards, right?
Right. It is the back. No, where they're reducing it on the, and I don't even know where to, how to explain this, but I'm looking at the plans now. And I think they're reducing it on the other, yeah, because previously, the ground floor is, let's see.
I see what you mean. You're right. You're right.
Yeah, so that's what I thought. So, so they need one side yard. They don't need, I guess, if they don't need the combined side yard.
Yeah, thanks very much.
So then, so, so then what we should say is whereas in, during its, its review of the application, the board determined that the parking spaces were a pre-existing non-conforming U condition, and there was no increase in the number of dwelling units. So no variance is needed for parking. And the combined, and the applicant note does not need a
variance for the combined side.
Variance for the, there is no, what we, we have to say is there was no non-compliance with the combined side yards, or no increase in the not, is it, let me go back and look. Have to see if it's an increase, if there's an existing non-compliance with the side yard, or.
It's the 5.8 plus 8.5, I believe, which is 14.
Right, but I'm, yes, so 5.8 plus, yeah, that's 14.
You said there's a little jut one place. I'm not sure if you, but that's, that's pre-existing, a little jut in the.
Right, and I guess we could say, and there was no increase in the, but, but the question is, is there a non-compliance in the first place? If the combined side yards are 8.6 and 5.8, that's more than 14. So there is no non-compliance with respect to the, to combined side yard.
Right, okay.
So that's what we should say, and no non-compliance with respect to combined signed yard, side yard.
We had a lot of conversations because this is the expansion of a non-conforming.
Right, but these two, but those two variances are done. Just to be clear, we eliminated those two.
Yeah, why don't we go through each one that we're thinking about, and we'll get to the one about the non-conforming use? And we can talk about how we think about those findings. Because the first one up on the resolution is about the the lesser side yard. Correct?
So the, so the area variance one is still needed.
Yep.
So what evidence does anyone want to provide for supporting this? We need something in here. So somebody needs to come up with a reason.
It's mostly that I would say that it's a de minimis a difference from, from what is required.
And that may be enough because it's so small, it's not gonna, well, I think if you're gonna say this, I mean, to me, the only other thing would be that it does not increase the setback from the, it doesn't increase the setback. It doesn't increase the degree of non-compliance of the first floor. It conforms with the same line, and it's de minimis.
Yes.
Like that.
Oh, wait, I'm not, are you talking about the, the, you're talking about the 5.8? But you're talking about the bar?
No, the 5.8.
Okay, what I'm confused about, as we're having this discussion, is it looks like, according to what I'm looking at, that the 5.8 is existing, it's already existing.
It's existing on the first floor, but, but when they build the second floor, they would need a variance for the piece on the second floor.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
So Robin suggested that we're not actually increasing what's already existing, and it's also a de minimis difference as what's required to what's.
Okay, so we should go through the balancing test and put in the, the, the distinguishing facts here.
But I think, right, you could do it that way, too. There will not be an undesirable change because, so you could say because, if someone wants to say why, because.
So it'd be because the.
It's not changing what's already existing in the.
Well, but it is, it is adding something. So you would have to relate it to the fact that the non-compliance already impinges into the side yard, and this does not, you know, does not impede any further into the side yard at a, whatever, that, 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 that kind of angle or that kind of dimension. Because the second floor is adding new, so you have to make a, craft it in a way to say something like that.
Also, you can say that the first floor side yard is grandfathered as a pre-existing non-conforming condition, and that the additional variance is does not, is just a continuation of, of that pre-existing measurement and does not actually increase the setback, you know, when measured from the ground.
Right, but I do, I do want to say one thing that you do all, I guess because you're getting to the de minimis, because we have, in fact, and you know, I, I would bet, and I can't think of a specific one off the top of my head, but we, in other applications in the past, the, of the board may have said, notwithstanding that it's a second floor, the floor, it's too close, and we're not gonna let you do it anyway. So the mere fact that it's the same dimension and the same location.
So it's a balancing.
Correct. That's why I said, I guess it's offset.
Yes, but it's, it's a balancing.
Okay.
Yeah, so when we get to the substantial factor, we'll say that quite clearly that it's de minimis. So, you know, we're just setting out all the factors, and then, you know, we're balancing them.
Okay, so, okay, what else? Anybody, what else do you want to say about this?
Or any of the findings?
I think you'd, okay, well, in terms of the, the substantiality, you'll, you'll say is is not substantial under the circumstances and is, is de minimis.
Well, I think you can't just say that. You need to say, I mean, that's the problem with this. That's what the standard language is. I think if we're gonna say this, and we need to say, do this for every application, we need to say it is only 0.2 feet, and therefore, is not substantial.
Well, I think we should use percentages as opposed to feet.
I'm not sure why.
I think I had figured out what.
I, I don't know that, I, I don't know that, I, I just, I'm not sure that that's, I, I don't know that I agree with it, so, but I'm not gonna vote for this variance, this, the, the resolution anyway. So you guys can do what you want on this one, but in general, I don't think the fact that it's percentages is the only, is, is, is the way we determine everything.
You don't want to vote individually.
You have to designate it in feet.
I, I'm not, my, my problem is that I don't think that I have a real problem, as I've said before, with the fact that we are increasing a non-conforming use, and I've been on the board when, in the past, when I have.
That's the question. You don't want to vote individually for these variances.
Oh, no, we could, I'm not gonna vote for any of them. So we can vote individually for all of them, or we can vote for all of them at once. All I'm saying is, but I understand it's gonna be adopted, and that's fine. So I just want to make sure when that happens that it's adopted in a way that works.
Oh.
That's what I'm trying to do.
Fair enough.
I, I have to be honest, Robin, I'm, I'm, I'm agreeing with you because I haven't heard anything that makes this unique, and I know in the past, and you're correct, that the board has not approved any of these.
Okay, in the interest of time, could we go through the resolution and then?
Yes, let's go through it. So that's what we're saying. We're going through the second one. So, so you can say whichever you want. If, if those of you who are voting for think that it's okay just to put a percentage in, and Greta has the percentage, then put the percentage in. But I'm just saying as a general principle, I don't think percentage is always right enough.
So you gotta remember, the building department.
The percentage, so someone can write it down.
Remember, the building department and the surveyors have to deal with this stuff, and it's never done in a percentage basis. It's always done in decimal of a feet, of a foot. So I think you need to confine it to decimals of a foot. Because.
I just, I disagree. I disagree. I think percentages really show you the relative impact of the variance.
I'm fine. So all I said is.
You can do it anywhere you want. I really don't care. You can do it anywhere.
If you have the percentage, then you can put it in. That's fine.
I think I figured it out to be, yeah, I think I figured it out to be 5%, approximately 5%.
That 0.2 feet is 5% of 6 feet?
0.2 is 5% of 6 feet.
Yeah, I think.
0.2 is not 5% of 6 feet.
0.05 times 6 is 0.3. So where are we going from there?
Okay, let me. Okay.
You know, you need to put it in, in terms of decimals of a foot.
I think that.
When you say.
Both ways, Greta. If you put it in both ways, then it's easy for everyone who has no issue. It's 0.2 feet, which is only blank percent.
Is that, is that 0.2 feet, or is that actually, is it 5, are they doing 5.8, or are they doing 5 feet 8 inches?
No, it's, it's decimals of a foot. So it's 5.8 feet.
5.8, okay, okay. So I'll double check the math.
Okay, so we'll come back to that.
Maybe that was.
So, so we can move on. We'll come back to Greta's calculation. Anything else you want to say about any of the other findings here?
You know, 2/10 of 6 feet is 0.0333, okay? If that's what you want to put it in.
Okay, but I, I think that.
Yeah, it's, so it's actually.
67%.
So it's 3%. It's 3%.
Right.
It's actually closer to 3%.
Fine, so you'll say 0.2 feet, or also, which is only 3%? Okay.
Approximately 3% because it's more.
Right.
Right.
Okay. Go ahead, next. What, anything else?
The next one is the side yard, which we don't need to do.
Wait, before we go to the side yard, which we're gonna delete from this, is, is there anything else anybody wants to say about the other findings with respect to the side yard before we move on?
Well, I wanna, I think we can say when we talk about that it's not going to have an undesirable change. Also, I think we can mention the fact that there were several unsolicited letters of support from neighbors.
Yeah, that's worth, so what do you want to say? So say, so put it into a sentence, Greta, or a something.
Okay, well, I think it will be, it could be under, there will not be an undesirable change produced in the character of the neighborhood or detrimental or detriment to nearby properties created by the granting of the variance as evidenced by several unsolicited, unsolicited letters of support.
Were they unsolicited? Did, I don't remember if the.
Yeah, that's what, that's what, that's what he's, well, that was his representation.
Okay.
He said Mr. Taylor had said that they were unsolicited. That's on, in the record.
I couldn't remember. Okay.
Yeah, that's my recollection. That people just came, just admitted it and, you know, came up to him and saying, yeah, we think this is a great thing.
Um, so, um, okay, so that's what you want to say. Anything else on that before we move on to the next one?
Well, when you talk about the benefits offered by the applicant cannot be achieved by some other method feasible by the applicant, I, I think you, we could just say that it is, it's, again, it's, it's the most logical, you know, it's a, it's a logical extension of, you know, it's using the existing footprint, and it's just extend, extending upward. It's not.
Okay, okay. All right. Anything else? And if not, we'll go on. We've got some substance in there, so that's okay.
Okay.
Now. Okay, now, C is.
You mean 2?
No, I'm not going to. I'm going to see.
2 is out, and we're going to 3?
No, no, I'm still on this. I'm under the conditions, C.
Oh, the conditions.
Yes, sorry, just because it's gonna be the same in any request for extending the term, but the fil, shall render this resolution.
So you're, okay, so you're under the resolution. Okay, A, and we've changed the language in A, not to be in strict compliance, but to be in material compliance?
Well, no, actually, what we've said is not that is to say that, provide, it doesn't say material compliance because nobody's gonna, we have, they have other language that we've used in other variances that talks about provided, the change does not relate to the dimensions as approved herein or any new violations, something like that. So that's the language we've put into the all, the other recent variances, and we need that same language here. I don't have it in front of me. Oh, wait, let me see if I can find another resolution. Let me look.
I was looking for it. I couldn't find another resolution.
Yeah, hang on, maybe I've got it. Resolution. Okay, let's try this one. I've got a few resolutions I have to open, one that has all of the right. I need to find a variance resolution. Sorry, I'm looking for it. Okay, except as me being expressly modified by the conditions herein or any minor insignificant variations as approved by the building inspector, provided they do not increase the dimensions approved in this, approved in the variance in the. Provided they do not increase the dimensions approved in this variance, or otherwise create a new non-compliant condition. So that should solve that. That should do that. I'm not crazy about minor insignificant. It's a little, still a little weird, but I think we can leave it for now.
Why do you say immaterial?
Because I, I never liked the word material. Material to what? Material to the village, material to the property owner, material to the code, material to what? He could, the applicant could say it's not material to me, or the building depart, material is too general and doesn't say material to what? Material to the cost, material to the dimensions, material to the color? Material is too vague. We have to talk about specific with respect to dimensions. It's dimensions that we care about. We don't really care about other things. I mean, that's what we're looking at. Okay, the next, the next, go ahead. So the 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 resolution relating to the combined side yard should be just deleted because there isn't any?
Well, we, are we done with the?
Yeah, I think so. Unless somebody else has something else.
Well, C, we remember we changed the language of C.
But I think C is.
We weren't calling.
This is okay.
We're not.
Oh, a building permit. A building permit, just like you're talking about.
Yeah, which we now say a permit to, for the construction of the premises.
In a, for the construction of the, construction approved herein. That's what it should say.
Okay, yeah. So there are two places that we say building permit, so building should be taken out both places.
No, we should say a building permit for the construction, because I don't know what other kind of permit might be. So it should say building, actually. It's just that there are many kinds of building permits, so we're limiting it to a building permit for the construction.
Okay, right. Okay, we can do that. We can say a building permit for the construction. That's fine.
Yeah.
Okay, that's fine, fine. That works.
Okay, if nothing else, then let's, okay, Roman numeral 2 with respect to combined side yard is gone, and now we're on Roman numeral 3. Somebody want to put some substance in there?
Okay.
Since that is arguably the biggest problem.
I have a suggestion for number 2.
Well, we're taking out number 2.
I mean, number 3, the second paragraph in number 3. So I believe the first paragraph is just stating, stating the, the, what the code says. And the second paragraph, whereas, I don't want to read the whole paragraph, but if you're all looking at the, the text, I'm picking up where it says fits well to the existing neighborhood, is consistent in scale with nearby buildings, does not increase building height.
Wait, it's a typo there. It's, does not increase, not increases. The S should come out of the word increase.
Okay. Right. And then what I would like to add, the use is consistent with the general residential nature of the community, comma. No one from the neighborhood has voiced opposition to the plan to extend this non-conforming use, comma, and another one is it's sufficient in its current size to be used as a two-family home, and the construction does not decrease the chance that it will revert to a conforming use.
I, I will say one thing, and, you know, again, you can, you can do what you want, but every other application that I've looked at that the board, that's when I've been on the board and we've considered these, they all would have met what you just said. Not, they were all two-family and single-family districts.
I don't, you keep talking about it, but I, I haven't seen an evidence of it. I don't see examples. I, I, you know, I don't mean to doubt you, Robin, but I don't have that in front of me to compare it to.
I, I'm, I'm telling you, that's what it is. So I would suggest, so all I'm saying, Meg, all I'm saying is you need to come up with some, I, I think you don't want to, you don't have to. I'm not voting for it. But I would recommend that you come up with something else other than just saying it's a residential building and a residential.
Of something that's happened, but I don't have the actual, I can't consider that myself because I don't have it in front of me.
But there's nothing to have in front of you, because if we deny the resolution, we generally deny.
I don't have any facts in front of me except for what you're telling me, Robin. So. So I don't mean to be doubtful, but unless I have the actual, I know how many times it happened, I know the situation that happened, um, I, I, I can't, I don't, I guess.
Board will do what it wants. I gave you my, my thoughts, and you guys will do what you want, and take into consideration the fact that you don't have proof, and you don't have to believe what I said, or you can adopt this as it is, and then the next time we have one in front of us, you'll have to, we'll have to deal with it. So go ahead, that's fine. I'm just giving you my concerns here.
So who was I dictating that to? Is that, is that Michael yet?
Presumably. I think it'll be on the record and, and if there's any question.
I've been writing it down.
Thank you very much. So what I did was I took out the phrase, the proposed construction would not be relevant to the risk of, because I replaced it with the, the language that I had. That was the part that I took out, but I, I, I would leave in all the rest that you wrote and the premises, you know, that's up to there. That's what I would leave in.
Okay.
So can you read it? I mean, I didn't like the part about not an investment property, because what, somebody, they could sell it and it could become an investment property. That's, that's not, that's not an issue, is it?
To me, it's, it's one of the factors that inclines me to vote in favor of it, that someone is not, not living in it, and they're trying to keep it as a family because they make more money that way.
But this, this, this.
I'm sorry. Let me just.
Okay, sorry.
Let, Greta, it's that we are actually weighing the benefit to the applicant, to any other detriment to the community, and this is not purely to make money, but it is a benefit to the family that wants to remain in the home.
Okay, but you remember, the variance is granted to the property, not the homeowner. Just keep that in mind.
I understand.
I, I will say that the other applications, we had an application to modernize a bathroom that we turned down because it was going to really expand it. It was a, like a forties or fifty, it was a fifty small bathroom, and it was to expand it, and the board turned it down. There was an application to expand a second floor in order to allow their elderly parents to live upstairs. And I don't remember, those are two of the ones that I remember that we turned down. So I'm just, you may not believe that, Meg, but those are in fact two of the ones.
I'm not saying I don't believe it, but I need to be able to read it, to consider it, to see if I agree that it's exactly complement, you know, something to compare to this.
Well, maybe you should have, uh, William, track down those and give them to you before you vote on this application.
We've been suggesting this application for the last, like, three or four months. This is not.
I think that at this point, I'm only suggesting that we just make language, if they want to do that, that we get language in here that somehow or another distinguishes this. That's all I'm saying. So that in the future, when we have other applications, like the two that I mentioned, we, unless the board wants to grant them all, in which case it doesn't matter, because the board wants to grant them all. I wouldn't see how those, this would be any different from the ones that, when I was on the board, we denied. So if the board believes that they should be granting them all, then that's what the board will do if they come back. So, um, that's all. But if you want to distinguish this, then I think what you've said has got to, is, it may not be that strong. That's all I'm saying. But I guess you're satisfied with what Meg has suggested, so continue with your suggestions, Meg.
I, I disagree about, I disagree with the language about the investment property. Because that does, you know, this is, this is an application that runs with the land, and they could sell that property, and the next owner could be the investment property, and that's, that's going to be fine.
I don't have a, I think it's, it's a salient factor, but if, if, if you can't vote for it with that in there, then I guess we take it out.
Yeah, I mean, I think we have, I mean, I, I think we have to keep with factors that run with the land. Not who the owner is.
You know, I, I prefer it's in, but I don't care if it's out either, so it's not going to change my vote if it's out, so. Abby, are you inclined to vote for this? Do you have comments on how we're writing this?
No, I, I am as before, um, planning to, to vote for it. I was just kind of scrolling through, because I think, what I was thinking is, is good, for me, the investment property proposition Meg was mentioning, I think, to me, it goes more to the point that, um, they're asking to, like, it wasn't self-inflicted, right? It's not someone who bought a property and then turned around and said, oh, well, we want to expand it, and that was a plan. So I think it goes to motive, to that motivational point of like, they didn't necessarily bring this on themselves. They got caught in COVID and, um, you know, their family was, you know, they need to expand because of, you know, working from home and other situational factors. So that's how I was thinking about that from an intent standpoint.
And I agree, if that was the only reason why we would grant it, it doesn't make sense, but to me, it's one of the factors that line up in this particular application.
Yeah, no, I, I agree. I'm, I, I'm just explaining why I thought that was a relevant factor. Um, but, like you said, I, you know, if you want to take that up, I'm fine with that, but, um, but yeah, I mean, I think we discussed this at length last month, so.
I, I think I'd be more comfortable taking it out and really focusing on, on factors that would be existing for the next homeowner and the next homeowner and then the next homeowner. Um, and the next homeowner could use it for investment property, and that would be fine.
I think anybody who buys a home, buys property, it's pretty much an investment, whether they live in it or not.
Um, yes and no. I mean, I think if you have a two-family home, it's more of, it's more of an investment property, because you're renting it out to another family. But I say.
I, I think, we're both fine with taking it out, so we have to keep talking about it, because if you don't want it in, then we're fine taking that out.
Okay. Okay.
Anybody have, you have any other comments on, on this resolution, everybody, or on any, on this variance, or any of the other pieces of this?
Well, we're going to go through the five factors and try to.
It would be good to do that. I recommend you do that, because so that future boards have something other than this very general statement.
So there'll be not an undesirable change.
Right.
Produced in the character of the neighborhood or detriment to nearby properties created by this variance. Um, as, as, um.
Cut it out.
The, um, the premises appear consistent with other, other, um, homes.
The physical appearance of the.
The physical, the, the physical appearance, um, would be comparable, would be aligned with, um, the size of other homes in the, in the immediate vicinity, and that.
Consistent with the residential nature of the neighborhood.
And then also mentioned the unsolicited, um, and as evidenced by unsolicited, um, letters of support from neighbors. Supporting the project.
Okay.
Um, and for B, I'd say the benefits offered by the applicant cannot be achieved by some other method feasible for the applicant. And I know that this is one of the principles, is that we're weighing the benefit to the, to the applicant compared to, um, any detriment to the community, and it seems like we can put it in there. The benefits offered by the applicant cannot be achieved. Um, and the benefit for the applicant outweighs the detriment to the health, safety, and welfare of the community. Because that's one of the things that we think about.
Yeah.
Well, I, I guess for the B, you know, you would argue that, um, to give up, to give up the economic benefit, um, of the other family home would be, um, and lose, and lose that benefit, you know, would be significant to, um, to the, to the applicant or any applicant, to lose that economic benefit of having, of having.
So how about the benefits offered by the applicant cannot be achieved by, um, by any other, um, um, affordable method feasible, because it was not affordable to give it up?
Yeah.
Yep.
Um, C, the requested variance is not substantial under the circumstances. They are not increasing the footprint of the building. They are not increasing the appearance of the size of the building in a, um, in a significant way from the street.
Well, I, I would say, I would, if we're talking, I would talk about that, um, the requested variance is under fifteen percent.
Yeah.
But the variance we're talking about here is not the FAR. We're talking about the variance is continuing the use. So that's why I would say, um, the requested variance.
Oh, I'm, I'm really sorry. I thought we were talking, oh, my mistake. I thought we were talking about FAR, okay.
I think, I, I would suggest that the variance, since all, since both variances, the side yard variance and the FAR variance, go to increasing the degree of non-compliance, that the second variance that you grant should be the FAR, and the third and final, after you've granted these, should be the overall variance.
That's fine, but we're already.
Whether it should be first or last.
We'll make this third, but let's finish our conversation about this one, and then we'll put a third.
Yeah, no, no, I was just suggesting we move it to that play, that, that board.
So I would say that the requested variance is not substantial, um, as they are not, um, increasing the footprint, um, of the structure in order to extend this unpermitted use.
And, and that the, and that the substantive use is, um, not changed in that it's still, it's still a two-family house, you know, it's not as if it's a three-family house or a four-family house. It's still a two-family house.
It's not increasing the number of dwelling units. It's simply enlarging one of the dwelling units.
Right, yeah.
Um, I would just leave D, the proposed variance will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical environmental conditions. I don't know that we have to add anything there.
No, I feel like that's A in great shape.
That was, that's just standard, the number, the D, and then E. Oh, here we have, I'm sorry, here is where we have the benefits to the applicant outweighs any detriment to the, indeed. The alleged difficulty is self-created, but not of such a nature as to require denial. So I'm okay with what's written there for E.
You, you realize, and I'm not, I'm just going to offer this to you, they have a third entrance, and that building can easily be split into a third unit.
Right, and that building can easily be used for lots of other purposes either. They could turn the downstairs into a store. They could start having a gambling parlor, but that doesn't mean we don't give a variance for things that we feel are, just because we think you're going to misuse it and sneak something in there. I don't think that's a reason to not grant a variance.
I'm, I'm, I am just giving you feedback, okay? That, I brought that up during the discussions when we were looking at.
I think we heard.
It can easily be turned into a third apartment.
Right, and that's not permitted, and that's not what we're granting the variance for.
Wow.
So do we have to change the language of the conditions, um, to what you said is what we're, uh, changing in terms of?
The same changes, it should be the same changes on the conditions.
Right.
Yep.
So, and we're not doing the variance on the off-street parking, so we could go to the FAR, which will be moved to be the number two variance?
I think that sense.
So it's right now, number four is the area variance for the FAR.
Yeah.
And, um, I don't know, Greta, if you have something, but I have for the first paragraph, whereas, um, and it states what the code is. Um, what I wanted to clarify here was, the applicant has requested an FAR of, of, what I would say is the applicant has requested an FAR of two thousand seven hundred and twenty square feet.
Seven twenty-eight.
Twenty-seven, twenty-eight square feet, um, which is smaller than the two thousand eight hundred and eighteen square feet originally requested, um, in order to, uh, construct closer to the, or in order to be closer to zoning compliance. I just wanted to point out that they made an effort to make it even smaller. And then I went under A to A. There will not be an undesirable change produced in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties created by the granting of the variance, as the increase in bulk of the building is not visible from the street facing it, does not increase the footprint of the existing building, and does not increase the footprint of the existing building.
Meg, I'll, I'll offer you something. You said something before that, that is, that is, uh, dealing with zoning compliance. The entire building is non-compliant with zoning. So I don't know how you can put a statement in closer to zoning compliance when the entire building is a non-conforming, not in compliance with zoning.
Okay, but we're.
They would have to come to this board.
We're just talking about the variance for the FAR, so closer in compliance to the permitted FAR.
It's, it's a non-conform.
That's, you could say closer in compliance.
So you shouldn't use the term compliant, because.
Closer in compliance, Doug, if you want to listen to me, closer in compliance to the permitted FAR.
Okay.
So will you, go over the A, will you reread the A again, Meg, please?
Uh, there will not be an undesirable change produced in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties created by the granting of the variance, as the increase in the bulk of the building is not visible from the street it faces, and does not increase the footprint of the existing building.
I just want to say one thing in response to Doug's comment. The, I just double-checked the plans. The maximum permitted FAR is twenty-three seventy-three. They have an existing FAR of twenty-one ninety-one. So while the use as a two-family use is non-compliant, the structure itself with respect to FAR is currently complying. So I think that, so, um, FAR does, the current building does comply with FAR. Putting it out there.
Yeah.
So however you want to say it.
So you'd want, you'd want to say that the, um, application, something to the concept that the application was amended to be, um, in closer compliance.
To the effort permitted FAR.
Yeah.
Um, so then C is, it's not substantial, or do you want to say the requested variance is sub, do, how do you want to handle that, Greta? Do you feel it's substantial now or not substantial?
Oh, no, it's, it's, it's below fifteen percent, so I would. Oh, no, it's, it's, it's below fifteen percent. So I would agree that it's not substantial.
And then D, the proposed variance will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district as it does not, as the building, even with the additional FAR, I don't know how to say, it looks very much like all the other buildings. It will not look out of place. Does anybody have language to say?
Do, do we want to mention that it's, you know, that it's uniquely situated on a corner?
I don't know that that makes a difference in, in wanting to give it the FAR variance.
All right.
I said, I would say that even with the additional FAR, construction, additional FAR, it does not look out of place with the other buildings. It resembles many of the other buildings in there.
And it's, and, and has received unsolicited letters of support as evidenced by receiving unsolicited letters of support.
And then E, um, the alleged difficulty is self-created. Determine the benefit to the applicant outweighs any detriment as outlined above.
Do you have anything else to add to the variance with respect to FAR? And if not, same conditions that were already adjusted, that we already discussed, have to be on?
Yep.
Okay, so area of the number five comes out. Now, Michael, I have a question for you. You wrote this up as one, as five separate, well, even if it's going to be three separate variances, you wrote this up as three separate variances, but only provided for one vote, even though theoretically, the board members could vote for some of the variances and not all. So I don't know which, so we can do it, so we can do it either of two ways. We can either vote for each one, each variance individually, or we vote for all of them and somehow we don't need, we're not, I mean, how do you want to do, how are we doing it? And maybe it's here because there were three, we're voting for all of them. So maybe it's okay to vote because the same people are going to vote for all three. I don't think there's a difference here. But, so never mind, we'll just leave it as it is. I think it will work on this one. Sorry, just move forward.
So then are we ready to make a motion to, to vote with the changes that we just made to the resolution?
Abby or Greta, do you have anything else you want to add to the resolution?
No, I'm ready to vote.
Okay, does somebody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to vote on this resolution with the changes.
You have to approve it. You're making a motion to approve the resolution, not just.
But maybe you vote to approve the resolution with the changes, um, that we just orally gave to the attorney.
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay. Greta?
Yeah.
Doug? We can't, you got it, you're on mute, Doug.
No.
All right, Meg?
Yes.
Abby?
Yes.
And I vote no as well. And I will say, because I think this, as much as I feel empathy, I have empathy for the Taylors. I do think we, the board has too often voted not to do this, and I think that we should not be granting enlargements of non-conforming conditions. Um, but I vote no. So we are done with this resolution. Um, okay. Next application. Right, Abby, you gonna leave now?
I'm gonna leave now. Thanks, everybody. Sorry.
Take care. Have a good month, good holiday.
Yeah, happy holiday.
Thank you, you too. Bye.
Okay, next item on the agenda is we're going back to item number one on the agenda, which is two SP twenty-two, four nineteen Mamaroneck Avenue. My question for, um, William and Amber, did we get the, we had said that this was closed, except we were waiting for some certification from the electrician, from an electrician, that the corrections, that what he did was consistent, that he had the necessary permit. Did we get anything?
Frank?
Yeah, hold on a second.
You're on mute, Frank?
You're on mute, Frank. What they did not get, um, the applicant was supposed to get documentation of a fire alarm test for the inspector. And without that, we cannot close out that permit.
And they didn't get that?
They did not get, not to, no, they did not get it. They were aware of it and, uh.
Wait, that's, we told them they had to get a, um, something, I remember from an electrician.
Well, that's part of it. Electrical certification of.
Okay, but we didn't vote on it because we were waiting for them to get it. They said it would take two weeks to get. Oh, right, need certification from fire underwriter that the electrical work was done. No, that's what we needed. That's not the same thing that you're talking about, Frank.
This is.
We talked about a certification of the fire underwriter that the electrical work was done properly, and if we did not, did we get that, Frank? Do you have that certificate from the fire underwriter?
I, I do not have it, no.
Okay, so we said last time we couldn't vote on this because of that. Um, I think we still shouldn't be voting on this without that. Therefore, we're not, but I do think something else. We have been allowing these restaurants, this, you know, restaurants to continue operating while we consider if, you know, if they've applied and if it's taken us a while. But in this case, it is within the applicant's sole power as to provide us what we need. Now, I do not know how easy it will be to get the necessary certification and inspection in this time of year. So I ask Frank, uh, maybe Doug, given that it is December, we have the Christmas holidays, right, the end of the year coming upon us, would there be any reason that they could not get the necessary certification from the fire underwriter? And, which is what we said we needed in the next three weeks, before the next meeting?
Yeah, you can get the UL underwriter. Uh, as a matter of fact, Frank, I don't, I don't know who it is now. It used to be, Manx who worked for the village.
Yeah, there's a few different inspectors now. So I, I, I think he could have gotten that also, but the, the alarm that I'm speaking of, the alarm company's right in Mamaroneck. So there's no reason why he couldn't have gotten the report on the, uh, on the fire alarm from.
That's true.
Okay, so, uh, but here's my point. My point is, so I don't think we can vote today, but I'm raising as something for the board to consider when we adjourn, because we're going to have to adjourn this or deny it with that, you know, right? We're going to need permission since we closed the hearing. He's going to have, we have to make sure we have the right to continue it because it's been more than, by the next meeting, it will be more than sixty days after the hearing was closed. So we're going to need the applicant to agree to extend that sixty-two days or it's an automatic denial. So Michael or Will, someone needs to contact the applicant here. I don't think there was a lawyer, so, um, whether it's Michael or Will. And, but my, what I'm saying is, I don't want this to go on forever. I mean, there's a limit. So I would suggest that if he does not, that, that we get this by the next meeting or we consider denying the application.
But he should get, he should get notice that that's what we have decided.
Absolutely, but he will, he, right, so when they call to find out, you know, Will and, Will and, when they, when Will or Michael calls to find, to tell the applicant that we need them to extend the sixty-day, the sixty-two-day requirement, they should also inform them that they, or if there's a reason they can't get it, they can come back. We will reopen the hearing and they can tell us why they didn't get it. If there is some, in fact, some reason why they couldn't get that other than they just didn't want to.
Well, I have to recuse myself on it, but.
So there's not, there's not really any but then. You can't talk about it, Doug, if you're.
Can't talk about it.
Greta or Meg, are you okay with what I said?
Yeah, as long as he has noticed. I don't want to just surprise him with it, like he wasn't listening and he didn't aware.
No, no, I agree with you.
Yeah, I, I agree too. He needs notice, but, you know, he has not been acting with diligence on this and there should be a consequence.
There's a doubt that he didn't get it because there's actually something wrong, but it's, it's not working and we need to know that. Things should be in good order if we're going to give a special permit.
Okay, so, um, I guess we will, again, William or, um, Michael, whoever, please make sure you check with both, make sure you tell him that notice about the, uh, getting what he needs to do and that getting permission to extend. Okay, the next item before us is the closed application of Chipotle eight oh five Mamaroneck Avenue for the sign, accessory sign. So we have a red draft resolution. Somewhere.
So are we talking about this? I have, um, it's in the second sentence of the resolution, there's a, it says sign variances, but I think it's only one sign variance. There's an S on variances in the second line.
Yep.
That's just like a typo.
And the premises should be, and this goes with the other resolution and all resolutions. The premises as a defined term, the P should be capitalized and then remain capitalized throughout the resolution. That's another.
Yep, that's.
And that applies to the other resolution, applies to all resolutions.
And then I have something to say in the, when we get to number two, um, a balancing of all the credible evidence the board finds in that paragraph on our findings in B. It said the benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some other means. But actually, I thought it could be achieved if he had just put the biggest sign he could on the facade sign. He didn't need a variance. So he actually had a way of achieving it but chose, I would like to give credit to the, the applicant. He chose to not have an oversized sign on the facade. So he didn't go to the maximum size that he could put on the facade in order to be able to get the size he wanted on the, uh, to the parking lot. I don't know, I just found like he couldn't do it any other way, but he, he, he did have an option, but he chose, he didn't want to, he wanted to keep it a, you know, a discreet sign on the facade sign, and so that's why he needs to ask.
So maybe what we would say is that there were no feasible alternatives without enlarging the facade sign significantly.
Yeah.
So let's just say that, make it simple.
Yeah.
Okay, but before we get there, the first paragraph under sign variance talks about setback in an R-five district. That's just wrong.
They, they said a revised, they sort of sent a revised version.
Are you looking at the revised version, Robin?
There's a revised.
Apparently not. Sorry, apparently not.
Yeah, I noticed that too, but they did send a revised one that corrected that.
When did you send a revised one? What's the one I'm looking at?
Uh, sometime this morning. Was it around ten?
Oh, today it came.
It was, uh, yesterday, or, uh, two days ago, ten AM.
Okay, maybe I'm still looking at an old one. Revised eight oh five. Oh, right, that's, this is the one that had the changes in. You're right. I, I forgot. Okay, I did look at that. I forgot, I just didn't have it open. So, got it. Can I give me a second to open it? Okay, sorry. Yeah, go ahead. I think we need to make some, a statement before this, which is, is the way I like to do this, which is to say something about, whereas this building, whereas Chipotle is the end building, uh, in this small shop, a small strip center, strip, it's not a strip shop, in the small shopping center. And has one side that faces onto Mamaroneck Avenue and another side that faces into the parking lot. Let's give some descriptions so we know what this is and why we're doing this, because it's relevant. And that could come in the first set of, well, no, there's only one variance here, so. We don't need the number one, which I think he, that's what you said, Meg, right, to take out the one sign variance. There's only one variance. So the whole one, Roman numeral one and sign variance should come out. Where, I think before we, so whereas the applicant applied for sign variance, whereas, uh, the at the, the applicant's premises, whereas the, what did we call it? Whereas the premises are located are the end store, uh, in, uh, this, this small shopping center with one side facing Mamaroneck Avenue and one side facing the parking lot. So that should go after that. And then whereas after duly considering the proofs and evidence. Okay. I, I, with respect, okay, so there will not be an undesirable change. I think we should say, as night, as the proposed sign is not larger than other signs, um,
or is consistent.
Or consistent, that's fine.
Is consistent.
I think that's fine. That's okay.
Yeah, so as the proposed size is consistent with, um, the size of other businesses in the parking area.
Right. Uh, then, then the change was just discussed about the benefit cannot be achieved except by significantly increasing the size of the primary sign.
Right. And then I think, see, we have to say that the, the requested sign variance is substantial. I mean, it is.
Substantial, but they actually have the, had the opportunity to make it even larger if he had, you know, the, the code allows it to be even larger.
So then we should say maybe the requested sign variance is substantial, given the requirements of the, of the code, but is, is not substantial, given the maximum size that could be permitted on, that could, could have been constructed on these, on the premises.
That's good, Robin.
Okay, and then I think we could leave the rest.
Um, but E seems to be, um, there's something wrong with E.
Oh, the alleged difficulty self-created as to require denial.
Period.
Yeah, that should stay there. The proposed construction will be in the existing building footprint should be deleted. And we could leave in the, and it was determined, just that the, that clause, the proposed construction
Right.
should be deleted.
Yep.
Okay. The, um, okay, if, if, any, any other changes to the findings, um, anybody? Okay, then going to the conditions, the same changes to these conditions should be made as we just made to the variance for Taylor.
Yeah, though, and C, it's not really going to be a building permit. It's more of a permit to install a sign.
Oh, you're right. So it should say a permit to install a sign, whatever.
Sign permit.
I'm sorry?
A sign permit.
Yeah. Maybe we should just say, okay, yeah.
And so the word building should be taken off two places in C.
Right, before permit, before build of, and of the permit, you're right, right. Three places, three places.
Three places?
Yeah.
Oh, I, good for you. I didn't see three. I still don't, oh, yeah, you're right, three places.
Three places. Okay, so every place that says building permit, it should be changed to. Three places. Okay, so every place that says building permit, it should be changed to permit.
Yep.
Okay, anything else before we vote on this? Okay, somebody want to make a motion?
Make a motion.
Make a motion.
Approve this resolution with the changes that we just spoke about on the draft.
Okay, Greta, you want to second it?
I will second it.
Okay, Doug? You're on mute. You're on mute.
No, I vote no.
Okay, Meg?
Yes.
Greta?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. So this is approved by a vote of three to one. Okay. Now, moving on to the next item on the agenda, which is case 15A 2018, the, the 416 Waverly Avenue, the variance is not the variance, is the DEIS. There was some confusion and it turns out Ashley and other people listened to the last hearing and what we actually did, and I honestly don't remember why, and maybe somebody on the board does, one of the other board members remembers. We had closed this hearing, then we opened the hearing, we opened it and adjourned it to today, the public hearing. Now, I'm not sure, I can't remember why we did that and I, but we did and we.
I remember we were really confused about whether we were opening or closing or what.
Yes, so I'm not sure, but it looks like we adjourned it. So there should have been a public hearing, but there was been nothing to hold a public hearing on because just to restate what happened, we determined that the revised DEIS was not consistent, was not that complete, that we determined that revised DEIS was not complete and therefore they have to, we did not accept it. We gave them a list of changes that they're going to have to revise to fix it. So that's where we are with this. So there was no public hearing needed. So that's why I say I'm not sure why we reopened it. But since we did, it is open and what the applicant has asked is that, so that they don't have to resend out the notice to neighbors. And I gather they're working very quickly to revise the DEIS in order to resubmit it much more quickly than they resubmitted the last revision. That they would like us to adjourn, rather than close it. They would like, but of course it is open and so this should arguably be on the open side, but it wasn't announced as a public hearing today. So I don't think we can even have a public hearing on it today. So I think the only thing we can do is adjourn it. I'm not even sure. I think there's a lot of confusion as to what we can do, but I think because we didn't notice it as a public hearing today, notwithstanding that it was adjourned from the last meeting, I think we would have to just adjourn it from today to the next meeting. But at the next meeting, it should be down as a public hearing, which we may not be opening, but we need to consider whether or not what the applicant would like to do is keep adjourning it so that they don't have to renotice the neighbors, you know, send out the notices, which is expensive. It will still have to be separately noticed, you know, each month for the public hearing, you know, to the newspaper. That's still going to have to be done before each meeting. But anyway, so we can't do anything today, again, because of this open hearing, closed hearing. So we will adjourn it today and then at the next meeting, we'll have to, we can consider what we want to do going forward. Either Meg or Greta or Doug has anything you want to say about that, otherwise.
I have to be honest, I don't really know what the proper procedure is. If this is what's good for the applicant and we're following the right procedure, it's good for me.
I don't know what the proper procedure is. I don't think anyone's certain what the proper procedure is, which is why this is at least legal. I think what we're doing by not doing anything today.
Okay, it was fair to the applicant and it's legal.
The applicant is happy, wants to keep extending it, wants to keep.
Raised hand from the applicant, so let me know when you'd like to provide an opportunity for the.
We're not, the applicant does not have an opportunity to speak. This is not a public hearing. We didn't notice it as a public hearing. So we didn't open it as a public hearing.
So we're just adjourning this and we'll.
This happen, we'll have it down as a public hearing at the next meeting and then we can decide what we want to do going forward.
But the applicant does not need to notice the neighbors.
Certainly not now he doesn't. If we decide to close it at next time, then the applicant would need to renotice it.
Okay.
To the neighbors.
This is a sense like a continuation of what they had already noticed. Okay.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is considering amendments to the tree ordinance. I thought we did this.
Yeah, did we just get a copy of the letter with the edits that we did at the last meeting?
Is there something? I'm not sure what there.
Because it said the letter is clean and I thought perhaps we had made some more comments and then this is the clean version. The problem is when we have such a long document, if we don't get something with track changes, I don't know what I'm comparing it to.
I don't know. I mean, this is a very short memo thing on the tree ordinance and did the, did the, does, well, let's go before we even bother with this. Let me ask a question. If someone knows, did the trustees vote on this yet?
No, Madam Chair, I don't believe the board of trustees voted on this matter yet. They were, they were waiting to get comments from, from your board as well as the Harbor Coastal Commission.
Okay, so Meg, go ahead.
So the letter that we have now attached to our agenda, but that you put up there, was that somewhat revised after we discussed it at our last meeting?
I don't think we discussed this tree ordinance. We have barely discussed it. So, you know, this is a one page, one paragraph letter. I'm not sure we actually ever really.
If I remember correctly, I don't have my notes in front of me because I'm at home, but if I remember correctly, I believe you had a conversation about it and you didn't vote on the matter.
Right.
Because we were waiting for, for Commissioner Greta's comments, added those comments to the tree, to the tree ordinance and we sent it around again. And then you had a conversation at your last work session, but there was no vote.
Okay.
So, okay. So we need to vote on this letter and then you can send it to the board of trustees?
That's correct.
My, yeah, I'm not sure this is really relevant to the ZBA, honestly. So the tree ordinance, I have personal views on the tree ordinance, but it's, and which, you know, are not relevant, but even our comments here, just my thoughts about this are perhaps, this is even the comments we have here, which say we don't think it's a good idea that only one person makes the decision of a denial, but there's also, you know, there's more that's just, it's not only a denial that you could have a problem with, the, the the denial, right. So, yeah, never mind. Let's leave it. This is fine. Does anyone have a problem with this? Want to discuss it? Right, I'm not sure that it's necessary. I don't know that this is, this, this comment is fine with me. I just, you know, wonder if this is really even relevant to the ZBA at all. So this comment is fine if you want to make this, we want to move forward with this. Anybody have a comment on this or a thought about this, this letter?
No, we had a discussion and we were trying to stay away from policy and how we felt about the policy.
Right, right. That's what I'm saying. I don't have a problem either way. I don't know that it's necessary for us to comment. It really doesn't go to anything we do, but if we want to, I'm okay with this letter. So.
Yeah, I'm okay too.
Doug or Greta?
No, you know where I stand on the tree ordinance? I think it's an invasion of freedom. Honestly. Nobody should be able to dictate what you can or cannot do on your property with a tree. I'm sorry, I disagree.
But that does not, but this letter doesn't say that we support the tree ordinance.
I know, I know it doesn't. I just don't want to acknowledge it because I don't believe in it.
Okay, Greta, what do you think?
I'm just, I'm trying to, I'm trying to find the letter.
It's on the, if you go to the agenda, if you go to Novus, it's there.
Yeah, really? I'm looking on Novus and I'm not seeing.
If you go to.
Are you talking about the October?
Yeah, the thing that says October 2nd chair comments. I'm not sure why it's chair comments, but yes, that one.
That one?
Yeah.
Okay, I thought it was longer than this.
No, the tree ordinance was very short. Every other, all the other letters we wrote were much longer.
I mean, yeah, it's, yeah, I don't see it has some of the comments that I had given.
Oh, so then maybe it isn't. Well, if you want to make some other comments, we can wait. There's nothing that says we have to vote now.
Right.
So if you have other comments.
Well, I mean, I had put in some comments and I don't see that in this, this, this piece. That being said, I think there are tons of comments that are beginning, being given to the pre-ordinance. I think there's going to be another round of it, I suspect. You know, I did have some comments about, there were some defined terms that were not in the pre-ordinance. But.
You have those doubts, Greta, is it easy for you to send those in again?
Um, yeah, it would be easy for me to do it again, but again, I don't know whether we want to keep kicking this, kicking this down the road.
My suggestion would be.
Five billion comments.
My suggestion would be if Greta, if that we just don't, that we take the position, there's nothing we need, that this doesn't really relate to the zoning boards' work and therefore we're not going to make a comment on it at this time.
That's fine.
I can accept that Greta was taking some help if she thought, she thought some terms were not defined.
Well, I understand that, but she said, but she doesn't have the work before her and she thinks there's going to be another round of changes so that if it comes back.
I, I would, I think there will be, yeah.
So if it comes back, then at that point, we can always say, while it doesn't really relate to our peer view, we want to make sure that if there are any terms used, that these terms are defined and then we can do it then.
So we can just say right now, we have no comments for.
Right, the trustees. And I think we can leave it at that.
Okay.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is the letter to about defined terms. Everybody want to discuss today? What do you want to do? I don't care, one way or the other.
I prefer to wait to the work session.
Okay, we could do that at the work session.
Wait, what, the proposed letter?
We have, here's the problem. We have the proposed, what we're doing is the last, there is a version, if you go into the, if you go into Novus, let me find Novus, it's got a proposed letter to the village board of trustees and it's got board member Jürgen's revisions, October 11th. That is, in a sense, the last version that was circulated. So we, I think, should work from that version.
And I just want to point out that's my version with Greta's versions on top of it. So that was, so if I come up with more comments, it's like, wasn't that your version? No, it wasn't. It got revised dramatically through Greta's comments.
Right, so I think this is the current version that we are working with and at the next, I mean, I have a lot of comments.
Right.
A lot of comments. So I think making it for the work session makes sense.
We don't have a lot of applications right now. I can't imagine by the work session, we're going to have a whole lot to talk about. So why don't we just do it at the work session?
I think that's fine.
Yeah.
Because we can certainly do that at the work session. Okay. And so then the only other item, oh, no, the next item on the agenda is just confirming the calendar dates that were circulated. I'm fine with them. Does everybody okay with the dates? I don't think anyone had a problem with any of them. I'm not sure why we keep getting it here, but for some reason we do. So let's just make sure I think we're okay.
I thought we all said that these were okay.
Yeah, at the work session, we discussed it. So. Okay, so we're done with those meetings, with the calendar dates and then, oh, before we had to vote to the January, February, March and April minutes, we did talk about them at the work session, but we had to vote on them to, because we needed to vote on them at a public hearing, so not at a work session. So we need to vote on the January, February, March and April, which we were circulated, amendments were circulated. So the current version, which has all been discussed and reviewed, we just need to vote. Everybody was.
I'm sorry, I'm trying to get to where the agenda is. The, are those?
Minutes.
Are the transcript, are those the earlier ones that were not?
Earlier ones.
I'm sorry.
Earlier ones.
Okay.
The January through April were the actual minutes, not the transcript.
And I know that we did discuss those already.
Yeah, so we just need to vote and approve them with all the amendments that were, changes that were previously made. I make a motion to just so get to make it simple. I make a motion to approve the January, February, March and April minutes as edited, amended, revised. Is there a second?
I second.
Okay, Greta?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Meg?
Yes.
And I vote yes, so those are adopted. I don't know that anybody, I have not read the other four minutes.
Well, the other ones are quite long and I just want to say they have a preamble at the beginning. These are meant to be action minutes and just summarize votes and that's not true. That doesn't describe them accurately because they're actually a transcript of pretty much every word that anybody said. So I think we need to change the preamble that these are not action minutes.
Well, I think the first question that I would have before we even get there, because I don't really want to sit and review a transcript and having just had to review a deposition transcript, in order to know if this was accurate, we would have to sit and listen to the hearing in order to review it. We can't, there's no other way to do it to know if this was right because the, whoever transcribed it probably, as is natural, got things wrong. And I'm not meaning to impugn them. I'm just saying that's what happens. So my question, which is a question for probably Michael, what is the board's legal obligation with respect, and you won't know the answer today and that's fine, but with respect to these others, what is the board's legal obligation with respect to approval of minutes? What do we have to do?
I don't know off the top of my head.
Right, I didn't think you would. It's, wouldn't be the normal sort of question, but you know, I mean, minutes normally under Robert's rules of order are not this kind of thing. So I don't know at this point what we do or don't have to do. And before we, let's leave those other four minutes and any up continuing minutes. I don't know if someone's going to be making other minutes and if so, what the rules are, either that the New York state law requires or otherwise. So we need to know what that is before we approve any other minutes. Thank you. I think that's it for the agenda. Is there anyone else? Does anyone else have anything? That's all that's on the agenda. Does anyone else have anything? Otherwise, I think we can probably adjourn.
Well, I just wanted to ask Frank, you know, it's really odd that we don't have any new applications. Is, Frank, are you finding that people are not making requests for building permits, that activity has really slowed down? What are you seeing on your end?
Well, it has slowed down. It's definitely slowed down, whether it's because it's December or, you know, this COVID thing, but it has slowed down. We've had some applications come in. We've had these intake meetings, but there isn't that much coming in right now.
I would say something else, though, some, you know, historically, you've always had a lot of special permit applications and a lot of those special permits have been for restaurants and certainly in this COVID era, a lot of restaurants are not opening, you know, there may be a lot fewer restaurants opening. So I'm not surprised we don't have many special permit.
Yeah, I just thought, I thought it was, there's a, a lot of people are expanding their homes and doing improvements on their homes. So just seems like sometime somebody must be, you know, expanding their footprint somewhere because that, I think there's a, I thought I have a friend who's an architect. I know there's a lot of building going on, so.
We do have a lot of applications that are going to be coming up with some of our problem, problem parcels in Mamaroneck on Stark Court, on Taylor's Lane, on Hillside Avenue, some of the things that have haunted us in the past. So you will be getting those shortly, probably after the new year.
All right, so February, I guess we should all be prepared for a long meeting. All right, if nothing else, I guess that's it. And we're, we can adjourn to the, then we have the work session in December, which I know Doug said you didn't say, think you would be able to, you might not be able to make it.
Yeah, what day is it?
Somebody have the calendar? I don't have my calendar.
I believe it's December 22nd.
No.
I think that sounds right. Amber, do you know, Mike, Will?
I believe it's December.
We actually have a couple of requests for public comment.
But we don't have a public hearing. There's no public hearing that's open, so I'm not sure what they would like to comment on. There's no pending hearing. Out of curiosity, what is it they wanted to comment on?
I don't have any particular notes, just a raised hand feature from a couple of.
Yeah, we don't have any. Yeah, we don't have any, there's no public hearings today. Nothing was noticed for a public here.
So, Madam Chair, if, if, if I may, if the applicants, the, the two people who have their hands raised, if you want to call planning staff tomorrow, we'll be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Okay.
Okay, what was, what was the question? It's just.
When's our, a date of our work session?
Ah.
It's the twenty second.
Yeah, I had twelve twenty two on my calendar.
It's one of the notes in the agenda, December twenty.
Thank you.
Okay, twelve twenty two. Okay, well then, everybody, I guess we will see you before the holiday, well, some holidays.
Do we have to vote to adjourn?
We do vote to adjourn. Or we don't have to, we don't usually do it, we do, you know, a show of hands vote, so a show of yeses. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Yes.
Second? Okay, Greta's seconding it. I'll take her hand as a second. All those in favor, yes or aye? Yes?
Aye.
Or raised hands?
Aye.
Bye.
We're adjourned. Have a good month. Stay healthy as COVID is now hitting. I saw there's a big jump in Mamaroneck, in the village. So you would please, everybody stay safe, keep masked and distanced and.
All right, enjoy, everybody.
Okay, bye.
Bye.
Ciao Frank, ciao Michael, Amber, William.